Dad, do you have a lighter on you? So, um, we're here in the city of Espaniola, New Mexico. Um, today is May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. The year is, uh... I mean, the time is five-thirty. We're here at a city council meeting. Um, there's going to be, um, some fireworks going on. Um, we've got some city councilors, uh, the mayor, the city manager. Uh, word out on the street is that, uh, the city manager, uh, got demoted, um, due to some, uh, recent events. So Eric, Mr. Burns Lohan, as I call him, um, is currently, uh, demoted as city manager. Um, there's some other employees that are gonna be, uh, talked about this evening, uh, regarding their employment with the city of Espaniola. Uh, that's gonna be brought up this evening as well. Uh, let's see how, uh, how this meeting goes. I got word, came down, was told that there's a lot of stuff that's been going on in the last couple of months, uh, regarding the city of Espaniola. Some elected officials, some appointees, some employees. There's a, there's a lot of things happening. So we're here in the city of Espaniola. Good, it's all broke? So... This is Espanola, New Mexico City Hall. Uh, the doors are closed. They're normally open fifteen till, till six. The meeting starts at six. So unfortunately, uh, the doors are closed right now. So, we're outside, uh, City Hall. Waiting for them to, uh, open up the building so we can, uh, go inside. Is it open? This is the back of City Hall. Oh, no, that's, uh, that's Jeff Sargent. That's a Valverde guy. That guy ain't worth a fudge. This is the mayor's, uh, vehicle right there. So, uh, let's go inside and see. Yes, the doors are open. Appreciate you guys coming in. Look, it's our favorite Esperanza. And then there's our favorite Elijah. Then there's our favorite Daniel Cordova. I don't know who that, that lady is.
I'm not a Kikir.
I said you're my, you're, you're my favorite, but I don't know who you are. This is, uh, Diane Padia. That's councillor Samuel Ladue. Where are my chambers? Technically, it's true. So, that's how I sign in. Let's... I, I need you to walk way over here, bro.
My daughter, she's fine. She's a hard kid.
I told you, girls are hard.
I'm like, I don't remember, like, look at her. She always...
She's always like...
She, she has a bad bitchy face. She's rough. Dude, yeah, she has a good dream. Hi, Maria.
What are you doing?
Oh, you know, just, just here. Why? If you stay, yeah, if you're here, you have to stay till it ends.
You gonna sit here till it ends?
No.
Why?
Do you want to sit there?
Yeah, that's cool. Sorry, how's it going?
Good.
Good?
I have never been to an Indian meeting. Never.
Good to see you person.
Yeah, good to see you too.
Have you gone to the bar? This whole time, you haven't gone?
It's almost, it's almost done. Hey, how's it going?
How you doing?
Good. How's your, how's your get through?
No, she leaves, she leaves early.
Would you like a drink?
She would love it. No, I want to relax myself. I can really get a lady. I tell her, no, he doesn't, he actually doesn't. Well, how am I supposed to come around? I just literally held up the shot. You don't want cash? I have, I can, I have a... Yes. I'm gonna take it to the... Can't wait for tomorrow. That says... Yes, it's dry five. It's your phone number? Eight-seven-two. Two-zero-nine. Four-four-five-five. Five. That's, that's five-five. I will never have a rush five. Five-five is better. How are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Sorry.
I was my seventy-eight.
You spoil him too much.
Till the day I die. Till the day I die.
Are you still taking care of that dog? That puppy? Yes. Is he okay? Yeah. The YouTube link is requiring a passport. Yeah, oh, well, the Zoom link, I'm sorry. The Zoom link is requiring a passport.
Just in case, just gonna get the wild hair.
You want some Doritos?
But I knew.
Excuse me? I like these. I, I...
Oh, you're gonna take my chair, bro?
Oh, you're gonna sit here?
Yeah.
Oh, so you can sit here.
You wanna sit here?
No. I didn't know you came from here. I stopped coming because my daughter. No, I just got here.
I couldn't get it on my toes.
Don't jam on later.
Hi, how are you?
She actually didn't even bring herself.
What did you bring? What the heck was that? What did you bring? What did you bring? Well, uh, what's your name? Brenda Keisho, and she bought me these.
Where are you from?
Someone's gonna get arrested. Hey, Beth, do you have a lighter?
Bethany? Yes.
What do you need a lighter for?
Yeah, I can go smoke a fat joint.
Yeah, I can give you one.
I'll bring it right back.
Remember that, okay? Don't be turning over it. They went for something for the girls here. They got dressed, and they gave me this, and they used to leave, you know? He did so. And I do that too.
On Thursday, that's... On Thursday? Oh, another expression.
Do you have snacks in the service?
Remember when you first, oh, trust me, I always have snacks. When you first started, um, I'd go to the gas station, I'd go ask Kyle, like, hey, what does your mom want you to drink? Pepsi or not? Yeah, like, uh, free ones or just, uh, the laces or whatever.
She's always getting you clothes.
What are you, how could you, you are work?
I tell him, I'm like...
She calls, she talks to Kyle, not me.
I still want to get it, but she don't get it.
I didn't.
Do you know what, when you say this, I have coffee for you. Oh, you got to have coffee?
Yes. Ready to go first.
The whole day passes, and you're gonna get coffee.
I forget.
They should do that hopefully.
I can forget. Sometimes, I forget everything.
I'll get you some of that Dorado.
Oh, man. It, it, I was like, oh, man.
There you go, young lady. Thank you.
Hopefully the last two. I went camping this weekend.
You don't think that that's a good idea, right?
I've never seen it from a...
Yeah, and I'll just go and talk to you. On Friday, just...
Do you have a quorum or no? I got, I got things to do tomorrow. Kitty Susan? Yes, he's supposed to be on, uh... Councillor Salvar Todes is on, right? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the second regular meeting of the month of May of the Espanola City Council. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance as it means?
Uh, Counselor Pedro Valdez will lead us in vocation and seating.
Thank you, Father, for another opportunity of serving in the city council or city. We ask that the Holy Spirit guide us with the decisions that we have to make tonight. Thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I may want to take a moment of silence in remembrance of former city manager, Mr. Max Sanchez, who passed away week before last. Uh, Mr. Sanchez was also state auditor, him as Mount's election cooperative manager, very involved in our community. I also was told he was housing authority director and on the board. Um, and we send our regards to Ms. Anadale and the Sanchez family on the passing of a big pillar in our community, Mr. Max Sanchez.
Oh, there. I'd also like to include, uh, Brian Rivera, UBS student, who passed away prior to graduation.
In your heavenly name, amen. Thank you, members of the governing body. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Justin Salazar Torres?
He's on line?
Justin, can you hear me? He's on line.
He needs to verbally...
Come back to her.
Okay, he needs to verbally acknowledge that he's present for the record.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
Present.
Counselor Irvin Salazar?
Present.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Here.
Counselor Felicia Chuleta Toya?
Present.
Counselor Nanette Rodriguez? Counselor Samuel Ladue?
Here.
Mayor Porte Peggy Sue Martinez?
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be with you all.
Counselor Justin Salazar Torres? It's not, I don't think he's connecting with us.
Okay. He needs to publicly be recognized before to be acknowledged.
So we have a quorum. We have seven present waiting on Justin.
Okay.
We have to find out before we move on without him there.
Um, yeah, you're talking to him?
Can you hear us, Justin?
Okay, the purpose is determining quorum. He's not present until he can verbally attest that he's present. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
How to approve the agenda presented? There are no changes. I would like to request, uh, we move the executive session to the front of the agenda after consent agenda. That's possible.
I have a motion. I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the executive session moving to immediately following the consent agenda. Second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. There's a motion made by the Mayor Porte Peggy Sue Martinez.
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Counselor Ladue?
Yes, I think, uh, if we're going to do that, if they're hearing the audience, maybe we should move matters from the mayor above the consent agenda, just so that the students could be recognized.
I will yield to a friendly amendment by the counselor and amend my previous amendment, uh, my previous motion to, uh, put matters of the mayor before the executive session right after the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. The maker of the motion is agreed and second by, um, Counselor Rodriguez, Mayor Porte, Peggy Sue Martinez, uh, all in favor, oh, sorry. So is he on or no?
Justin, can you hear me?
Okay, he can't, then all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign indicating the opposition. All right, moving on. The agenda is adopted this evening. Um, so forgiving matters from the mayor is before the consent agenda?
No. Yes. No, no, no. Matters of the mayor right after the consent agenda and then the executive session right after.
Twenty twenty-five. And also forgive me, hold a minute, Counselor. Um, and you also have the city council meeting minutes for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. There's a motion made by, uh, Counselor Pedro Valdez, second by Counselor Ladue. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, thank you. Moving on, matters from the mayor. Honoring graduates from the City of Espanola Student Summer Program.
Justin, are you with us?
So he can hear us, but I guess we can't hear him.
Can somebody call him?
Uh, call him? Oh, call him, call him. He said he's driving to City Center. Yeah, um...
I'm leaving, uh, Vietnam Brothers program.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Okay. Honoring graduates from the City of Espanola Student Summer Program. Carlos presenting this.
Uh, Shannon was. Uh, sure. She went home sick. So the names are listed on the agenda of the graduates who are graduating from the Emporium Summer Program that are working here with the City of Espanola.
Okay. All right, Carlos Garcia, from a pretty charter school who worked in the street service department. He will be pursuing a career with the City of Espanola Street Service Department. Carlos, are you here?
He wasn't able to attend tonight, sir.
Okay, all right. Uh, Tyler Lomea, from Espanola High School. He also worked in the street service department. He will attend Ottawa University in Arizona. Tyler, are you here?
I was just kind of graduating, so we never had...
Cruz Martinez, also from a pretty charter school. He worked in the parks department. He will attend the University of New Mexico. Are you here, Cruz?
Mayor, could we, uh, move these to the next meeting? It seems like there was a conflict of scheduling with something going on with their graduation.
I'm sure we can, yeah, we'll contact them and, uh, put them back on the agenda.
Need a motion or you don't need?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll just rehear it at that end. Um, if there's no further business on that end, um, executive session pursuant to ten fifteen, H one two, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. The separate individual performance evaluations of the following: the city manager, the city clerk, the police chief, the fire chief.
Into executive session to discuss pursuant to ten fifteen dash one eight two, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, uh, performance evaluations of the city manager, city clerk, police chief, or fire chief.
Motion made by the Mayor Porte Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Porte Peggy Sue Martinez?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor RJ Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor Felicia Chuleta Toya?
In favor.
Counselor Nanette Rodriguez?
Hold the motion.
Counselor Samuel Ladue?
Here.
And waiting on Justin Salazar Torres who's not present now.
We just...
Additionally, um, the rear grand suite needs to be admitted into the meeting. All right, there's a motion and a second. The time is six thirteen. We will convene into executive session.
No, this time I'm gonna charge you.
Oh, that's fine, charge me.
Uh, I gotta see Green Day.
Green.
Money.
I don't care.
I don't care what you do. Give me a dollar.
All I have is plastic or crypto. What you do on crypto or plastic?
I wanna see a green dollar bill there. Who thought I was gonna let it to the second time?
I don't carry that.
Borrow it. Tell these people, borrow it.
Let me, how much you want?
A dollar.
Oh, a dollar. I don't have cash. You have a dollar, Bethany? I need a dollar.
I don't have a dollar.
You have five?
No, I got a hundred.
I'll take it.
No, we're good. It's for Randy and his thing, I won't deny it.
You better smoke too.
I, I am. So I'm going, 'cause we're gonna be here for like two hours.
Yeah, well, there is an executive session, so it looks like... Do you want to...? Oh, you're going to water?
I was gonna start a good thing.
So, you have a great time, okay?
Oh, you have to do that hug. She doesn't like actual hugs.
I'm gonna grab her and hug her.
She doesn't like hugs. Okay, bye, be careful, here. Bye, Sarah. If I don't make it back, contact me.
Nah.
Okay.
Can you look right there? Where's the gas station or what?
You know you were coming to this meeting, right?
No, I didn't. It was a last meeting.
Don't ask for it again.
I won't.
Cause we will come to the next time.
Uh, it's the judge. Sorry, we have, we have an older judge.
I can give you two rocks.
That's all I need, that. Two rocks, would you take two rocks for it?
I say dollars, beans.
Three money.
I don't play that. Ask for another lighter again. He thinks I'm playing with you.
I'm sorry. Where are we going? Fire department.
Oh, it's the fire department.
I won't be in there for long, you know? For like an hour. You think two hours I'll be in there? I know, I'll be there for about maybe an hour. Then I'm gonna discuss. They in a boat.
Why did they move this ring back to the front?
Cause they can't. They're over me. I just think for truth, they can't.
You know, we're not from the west side. I don't know where you're from, but... Right, girl?
I'll get my head there. I'll get my head there from the west side.
Westsiders?
We're westsiders.
I have head there. I have head there on the west side. I have head there on the west side.
I ain't never seen you, so I know that we can kick your ass.
You might not see me, but you, you can't kick their ass.
Bring it. Bring it, huh, girl? You have no idea.
Hey, I'm so sorry about tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. I go out there every morning and every night. And your dogs.
And they know when you're there.
They run, 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 run. They follow me. Boy, when it's your treats, you know? And then now, and then they stay barking. While I'm at mom's house. And then when I leave, they immediately this way. And then I give them the next stop. But one of them's mean, yes, he hits you. The bigger one hits the smaller one. Like they're jealous. They're jealous that I'm paying attention. And then you have a little one inside. One time that little one was outside, so I had to give extra. And the big one went and took it away from him. Yeah. Is he? No!
Tell where you're from.
She knows where I'm from. She knows where I'm from.
Diana, Diana doesn't say anything where you're from.
West side. Okay? Where, where do you live?
I don't, I don't live here.
Where are you from?
Originally, I'm originally.
No, not when you're original, where you live now.
Where I live now? In California.
Where are you from, seriously?
Is it? I don't, that's one thing I don't do. En origen.
Okay, where do you put your hands? What pillow? And what? Does he live with you?
No. You know who I am?
No. Let me stop lying, Lord. I stopped lying. I know who you are. Do you know who I am?
Let's keep that straight.
I know you. I know you.
How do you know me?
I know your family. I know who you are.
That is my family.
You're Helen.
My brothers?
You have a daughter and a son.
Hey, guy. How you doing?
How's it, brother man? How are you, sir? Hey, did you bring me Starbucks or no? You're going to, you knew I was here. No, no. I'm, I'm good. You should have got like four shots in that, bro. It's gonna be a long night, brother.
Okay, keep going. What are my brothers' names? The whole neighborhood knows my brothers. So if you knew who I was, and you didn't just get part of the story as to who I was from here, you would know everything here. So tell me.
You used to work for the health department of the state of New Mexico?
No. Health, the health department? No. They told you wrong.
They come support.
No. Never. Promise, never. You didn't know me.
I do know you.
You know I served time, right?
For what?
I killed somebody.
How, how long did you serve? What is your sentence? What is your sentence and what, how many years?
Ten and a half years.
Your sentence is ten and a half years, so you served seven years.
No, I served ten.
So what was your sentence?
I am seventy years old. I am seventy years old.
You're talking to somebody that served prison time?
Did you?
Sixty percent of my life.
Oh my God, we're buddies then. No, I didn't serve ten. No, and you know that my mom was her neighbor? Right?
Do you want a cup?
Yeah, you're a cup. Out for out, out for out, out for lady out. Just throw it. I wish I had poppy cups in here, outfit. You still, you still work for a? A billion? Parents is a nephew.
Keep going. No.
No?
Nope.
No ties?
No ties. No, there is ties.
No, there's no ties.
Wait a minute, what clearance?
Oesteas.
Yeah, he's my nephew. Okay, the little one. Yeah, and then I have clearance of brother. Okay, I thought you were talking about my brother. Keep talking. And I wanna know. How you know everything about me? What were you doing inquiring about me?
I have people do background checks for me. And I work for government.
I work for the FBI.
I have people that work in the FBI. That's why I give my intel.
Why would you be asking about that?
I ask about everybody that works for government. The whole background.
Jeremy, what do you lose? No, now, like thirty years ago.
I never lose, I live in California. I used to live in Hispaniola for thirty years.
Really?
I moved to California two years ago.
And, but you, did you live in Hispaniola just to see if I knew?
I never lived, I lived in, I lived about three or seven years.
Okay. What is your name anyway? I don't even know your name. Steven? Steven Lona?
What you meant is you sent some new photos.
Where? On where?
On Facebook.
I did? What did you say?
I didn't say anything.
And I just went out at you back? Do you know why? You had to have said something.
I hold government accountable is what I do, brother.
Steven Lona? I haven't heard of the name. I honestly don't. Steven? Is your picture on there? How do you spell your last name?
The first one.
Who's the second one?
Mine, but I don't have that profile.
So it's that one? That was okay. See, I didn't understand my. Ooh, is that you throwing the pingers? Boy, you must have made those. No, okay. Look at kind of, look at, you're all badass.
I am badass.
Are you? Okay, well, let's see what you write down.
Ask your, ask your daughter about me.
What's happening?
Don't know you.
Did you guys go to school together?
No, I.
Wow, look how different you look.
I'm two years older than she is.
Oh, really? So did you know each other?
Yeah, I know you. Henrietta?
How do you know it?
Cause I, cause I, cause I just do. Soy mexicano.
If you're still talking to the government, why don't you stop doing that? With all the Mexicans and other places.
Cause it starts from the bottom up.
Do you agree with what he's doing?
I, I, I don't do, I don't, I don't do political stuff. I'm not, I'm not into politics.
Isn't that the little girl that you have?
Yeah.
That's nice of you to do that. By the time I leave, you'll go and update your name.
Don't worry, you have it there, buddy. He just started working for us. When he's sitting down, he's like, oh. Yeah. For me, it was a couple years before. But it was around that year, honestly, I had to learn about it.
Ooh, wow, look at that.
Yeah, yeah, you don't serve.
What does it say?
If you don't like me, I don't care.
A circle? It went to fast food. He's so low. Let me get out of your pocket. I'm sorry, I don't have a moment. Well. If I do, I don't remember, it's seventy years old. You wanna go and get another cigarette before it starts?
No, yeah.
You're only coming like, you don't know what I'm talking about? Here you go. Go. Be if I didn't like you, son of a bitch.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, you don't, you don't know me. But you use some choice word on a post. Towards you. And then I'm an idiot, and I don't know what I'm talking about.
That I would say that? Are you sure it was me that said that?
Yes, ma'am. I know you've been around.
I talk all kinds of shit. No, well, show me the post. Show it to me where I said it. Prove it. Prove it.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get you involved.
But he is involving you.
You're not gonna get me involved, but you're involving me.
Boy, he's involving you, girl. He's involving you. Wait a minute, let's go into this post. Let me just call your name up here. Okay?
Okay.
But never mind, I don't want him to involve you.
Okay. Go, go to, uh. No, watch. You're part of this group.
Welcome to my apartment. What's that? God is beautiful. You're from the west side? What is that? Jeremy. God is real witness, I don't know what that is. I do not care if you're a god.
I got a flag.
Estoy en la bolsa speaker.
This is me, and I got arrested two years ago.
Wow, here? Yeah, I stick you in there. Let's tell the council, Thomas.
I don't know, I gotta fight it. What you did, I don't, I don't mind. I don't feel, but I know who you are.
I don't know what, uh.
I just like.
How, how long ago is this?
Like maybe a year. Or six months ago?
Oh, no, no, no.
Six months to a year.
You just went in and looked into something. What was it you were looking at? Something about voices. What is that? I wanna look that up. What is it called? Voice to speak up. And I belong to this?
No, he wrote a. He wrote a comment. See, this is what I'm doing. All these government employees. That were, see, this is me.
One of you make fun of me, okay?
Yeah, a government employee. They're attacked here.
I'm a taxpayer.
No, you give people taxpayers. Taxpayers.
With who?
You give people taxpayers.
Don't make fun of me.
You're like a welfare recipient.
Do you hear me?
I'm just telling you, that's what I do.
And I'm telling you. Don't you put my name on this Facebook chip. You would not make a mistake. Boom, boom, boom.
I do. I, I call everybody out. Everybody and everyone.
Would you call out the right ones?
Call everyone out.
Oh, look at this. That's what I was, I wanted to find right. And that's what I, I've been asking. That. You don't know it, Charlie?
The, the, the pinky? The cheek?
Oh yeah, Steven, I wonder why. Every time the city attorney is here. They have to change the agenda in his favor. So he could get out early. Remember last time? Oh, it took. I've been there, my, so my girlfriend is gone, it's too boring. I've been there, my, so my government is gone, it's too boring.
No, I already had my morning one.
I knew it, dude.
You work, you work for me. I don't work for you. We'll get that clear. Are you coming back?
I guess it wasn't time now.
What game? What game? Who's paying? Uh, who's paying? I hope the Pacers beat the Knicks. What quarter is it, second? What's the score? Come on, bro, you gotta be a sports broadcaster. You gotta say what?
Is it basketball?
You gotta say who has the ball.
No, I know.
Who has the ball? Are you, are you here to support? Why are you guys here? You're not directors, are you guys? No? You're a director? What did you, what's, what's your title, dog? I can do some research on you, bro. Don't worry, I already did, bro. Ask Pablo if you don't mind me, bruh. Ask Pablo. I find dirt on all these dirty people here, huh? All these crooked people. My list.
Nonne, nonne, contra tes chipis.
What's chipis? Oh, they, I, they're in the office. And they gave me a bag. You want some? I have those left over.
I'm on a diet. Can't have no carbs.
No potatoes or nothing?
No bread.
That's hard.
Keto. I'm on a keto diet.
Oh, I forgot about that. Well, let me talk to you about it when I come back.
Is your divorce final or no? Huh? I heard you're getting divorced. Or you already are divorced?
Nothing to do with my job. Nothing to do with my job, right? Not my resume.
What? Of your divorce?
Nothing personal. When I do my job, it's all good.
Where's the personal question?
I don't mix personal. That's why I tore two phones, one personal, one work. I don't mix them. Nothing on my personal. I don't.
Why not you talk about your personal matters?
My personal is just with my family.
And what about friends?
I don't have many friends.
You don't talk to, to your friends about?
My friends all live in the state.
Uh.
My friends live out of state. That's what I was like, friends.
Did you talk to them about personal stuff?
No.
No?
There's no reason to share personal stuff with me.
Why? Cause I'll go-
Dude, you don't, you don't even tell us. You don't talk to people in the book. You're looking up to more?
No. You asked me, I answered. Everybody knows I don't live here, bro.
I don't. I don't, I don't protect too. I have too many things going on.
Bro, if you had too many things going on, Mizel, your feelings wouldn't get hurt, bro.
But I don't get it.
Bro, come on, Mizel. I'm forty, bro. Forty?
You don't like the forty.
Wow, you asked, I'm telling you. Hey, that's personal, bro. I don't, that's a personal question, bro. Uh, that's a personal, uh, that's between me and my family, bro.
I almost have enough, I almost have enough, I have enough experiences as far as your age.
But you still cry. You still whine. You're just whining outside. But you're whining outside, como un niño. Como un niño. No, chatty is two different things than whiny. Oh, guys. These ones don't, they don't like that you talk. I could care less about these ones. I could care less about you, bro. Are you saying, are you saying these elected officials don't like that you're talking to me? You're not the first one, bro. You're not the last one. They all, they all come out, they all come out and, and... Like Eric talks to me. I don't even like the guy that tries to talk to me. Peggy, Ms. Peggy tries to talk to me, I don't talk to her.
Do we talk sports?
Let's talk sports.
Talk sports, no. I love sport, I love baseball.
Wh- when did you get divorced? Let me know when you're in L.A. Can get you to the Dodger Stadium, bro.
Don't even say that. I'm an Angel. I don't, I don't like the Dodgers.
Uh, I don't like Anaheim. Yeah. All my life, bro.
Who's your favorite Dodger? Let's see.
Who, who, who was? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have a, I don't, I don't, I don't have a Dodger. I don't like, I like the team, but I don't have a favorite player. Like, no.
I have a favorite Dodger player, even though I hate them.
Oh, yeah?
Who do you think? That's the thing.
What year? What, what genre?
Eighties.
Eighties.
I'll give you the first name, first initial, his first name, Pat.
Uh.
Last name, E. Fernando.
Oh, you're talking about Patrick Valeria, Valerias Primo?
That's, that's Patrick Valerias Primo, bro. Yeah, that's Patrick's primo.
He was Turkey here and, and Sania.
Did you know that's Patrick's primo? Ask Patrick when, if he's here tonight, ask him if he's his primo, bro. That's what he claims. That's what he claims, Patrick.
I need a picture of him right now.
Ask, ask Patrick. Ask Patrick. Patrick, Patrick said more mentiras at the county than anything.
How do you know that?
Cause that's what Patrick said at the county when he worked for the county, bro.
Okay, so give me your favorite player.
I don't have a favorite player. I just like the Dodgers. Always had.
Dodgers?
I like, see, I, I'm an L.A. Dodgers fan, an L.A. Lakers fan, and a Dallas Cowboys fan. We're not supposed to. God, God didn't say Mizel and Steven are gonna make you guys both the same people. You're gonna like both the same things. Who's your, what's your basketball team?
You know what?
San Antonio.
You know what?
Cause, cause you're S.A. Who was the Iceman?
You remember George Gervin?
I just, I just like, uh, David Robertson, bro. That's the only one I like. No, David Robertson played for, uh, for the San Antonio. Uh, that's the only, cause he remind me of- I have no idea.
He was seven one.
I, I like him like, uh, Akeem Helajewon.
He played in our country for the N.C. Delaware. He was at Houston. Guess who was there?
You. When you're like twenty.
I was like, when you was it? You know, you know, you know who I used to stop playing with? When I was, I was still a kid, nineteen seventy-seven, when the Lobos ranked number four in the last two, I was paid four teams. I was in seventy-seven.
Yeah.
You like that?
No, I'm not a Lobo fan. I don't, I don't, I don't like, I don't like the Lobos. I don't like the Aggies. My college team for basketball is Maryland. And then my, uh, my college football team is Ohio State Buckeyes.
So you were probably happy this way?
Uh, happy every year.
I had a close friend who was under, wore a pentecamote for about fifteen years and passed away. That was his ultimate dream. He built half his house to look like, uh, the horse he was doing. He passed away.
So how come your gente don't like me? That's business. That's those, your, your workers.
Ooh, you already posted about the dollar.
Oh, a long time ago. Yeah, you charged me a dollar for, for no reason.
For a lighter.
For a lighter. I heard it's already on there. I'm sorry. I just gotta pull facts. A dollar for a red lighter. I fly. Yeah.
I have about forty-five.
Hey, on, on, on a busi-, on a business, on a business, no. Let, let's talk business. I don't know if you can, cause it's, it's pending litigation, but- But, but off, off subject. Hey. I wanna see how good your officers are in training, bro. Let's see if this is legit, that you say it is. If I'm at your scene, when there's a scene, and it doesn't involve me, and I'm not partying with a scene, and I approach you, and I ask you, I want the case number or the call number, what do you do?
I'll give it to you.
You'll give it to me? No hesitation? No, 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 nothing?
No, sir, there's nothing confidential with the case number, no.
You put that?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll see that. I don't hold you to it. Bro, you trying to kick that little homie out of the scene, dawg? That guy that told you, "Why are you telling me I can't record?" He told me I can't record, and then he changed the story and then- I don't know, there's a man here. Don't you remember a man telling you outside, and then I told you, "It's okay, they can record you." And then he finally, and then he said, "Yeah, after the fact, he let me film." It was a while back. He was right here in this little fireplace. I don't know his name, but he was here for the meeting. That's when he got all your little homies, "Come try to arrest me," because they ain't let me talk, 'cause I put down your daddy. I don't know his name. I'm your, I'm, I'm your daddy, bro. I don't carry cash. Crypto or plastic? I don't do Vemo. I don't do Vemo, I don't do Cash App, I don't do PayPal, I don't do any of this electronic. I don't do Zal. That's the number one hacking system there is out in America. I don't know if you knew that. That's the easiest way to hack, bro. Is Zal. No. You know? I retired when I was thirty-two years old. Did you know that? What did I do? I was subcontract for a, for a drafting business in Albuquerque. I did a lot of drafting for mo-, for houses and stuff like that.
Which companies did you work for?
That I won't disclose, 'cause that's personal.
Yeah, it is personal.
That's, but-
Were they top ten companies?
They're top five in, in Albuquerque.
I know you have family.
I just came out here for a special. Special meeting.
You hadn't been here in a while.
No? Cause I have other things to do. I come here when, when I- What I do? I'm a, I'm a, I hold government accountable is, is what I do. That's what I do.
That's your part-time job.
I don't have a part-time job. All I do is fly here, fly there, go here, go there, meet up with people, go to different towns, cities, municipalities, huh? I go to a lot of lunches. Let's do it. I'll write it off as a, as a, as a, as, as a business expense. Tax write-off, buddy.
I'm a, I'm a great baseball player.
Oh, yeah?
I play baseball. And I go watch college games. For baseball fans, for all of them, it's-
Which brother? My baby brother? Where? People, people, you don't remember people, 'cause they, they're, they have nothing, you have no care in the world for who they are.
I knew a lot of people. Like tomorrow, I got-
How many people here do you know? All of them, right? No, how many people here do you know? All of them, right? A good five percent, a good five percent of the people in here you don't know? Okay, one percent. Out of twenty people.
Do you think that's one percent? One percent is having a hundred.
Yeah.
There's no hundred people here, so I'd say more than one percent.
More than ten, like ten? There's twenty-five people here.
Let's put it this way, let's not count city people.
No, it's, it's city people. You gotta count them. See? You pay no mind. How many non-city people do you know? That's what Patrick said back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four. That's when he was working for the county. S.A. Vallevi. Or is that disorderly? Huh?
We, we talked, we had talked about stuff before that, right? Which one? Oh, Monica. Sounds actually, I think it's a, it's a mustang.
Anyway, we'll see. I'm going home to watch a Zoom. Yeah, my cat needs to go out.
Hey. That's a threat.
I don't care. Yeah, I can't, I don't give a shit. I got bail money. I just got paid. She's worth it. You don't fuck with my sister.
But in New Mexico, there's no bail. That's what sucks.
Well, you know, I could just be like everybody else.
Hey, how come you sent me to magistrate court, bro? Cause I wanna know you.
It wasn't a municipal statue.
But it happened city limits.
You can cite state or city.
You wanted, why did you want state instead of city?
Cause that's all we knew how to do in the country. State, we don't have municipal. We never dealt with municipal.
Why? Why, 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 why are you breaking chain of command? There, there is municipal courts. Why, what's his name? The judge, bro, there's- That have municipal court? Where in the world do I go to court for a traffic ticket, bro? Isn't it municipal? You're just scared, bro. He thought, he thought Joe or Alex was gonna do you something. No, um, I challenged these speed cameras they have. And I gave it to the mabre, and my attorney went, and I won them. Those are stupid tickets. The reason why is 'cause it violates your Sixth Amendment of the Constitution. You can't face the accuser, 'cause the accuser is the camera. The only person that's behind it is the person that reviews the camera. And that, and that's how I won my tickets. Exactly. But the accu-, who caught me? Was it the officer that caught me, or was it the camera that caught me? Uh, that's how I won, bro. I wish I could record in court. That'd be, that would be cool on. I don't have to worry about medic-, medicine. I don't have to worry about any of that. I don't have to worry about medic-, medicine. I don't have to worry about any of that. Cause I get it all for free when I'm in jail. That's how I lived. Majority of my life. That's personal.
No, I know, I just don't remember.
And that's personal. But yeah. That guy right there, the, the chief of police of S.P.L. Now he doesn't wanna say anything, 'cause he's the camera, and he gets in trouble by the government body. Actually, he gets in trouble by the mayor. So let's face it back, so he doesn't get in trouble. But the voice that you're hearing is this guy right here. So, uh, let's talk business. So on your memo you wrote, on the real grandson. No, you didn't write the memo? It didn't come from me? It was true? Uh, okay, let's, uh, let's get this clear.
It's, it's from two-
You stated, uh, you stated on, you stated on record that, uh, you didn't state anything?
Oh, yeah, I gave a, I gave a-
Oh, oh, you gave a, you gave a comment, right?
I gave a statement.
A statement? From it, from, from your mouth to the reporter? So you stated on your statement that you don't tolerate people in government to use their powers or authority to charge an arrest or have somebody not be arrested, not to interfere into police activities? That's what you said. Do I, do I believe that? Do I believe in that concept? Um, if you want, if you want my, my honest opinion about it?
You want someone to hear your opinion?
Do I want someone in my business? You're in somebody else's business that you shouldn't have. But, but they called you. They called you.
Which, which one?
Later, bro. He, he needs Skena, bro. He needs Baké over here. There's, there's that old guy. So, uh, the, the mariachi concert, bro. So, well, I'm, I'm going off by your statement. What you said, that people shouldn't interfere in police activities if there's so-and-so, right? You said that, right? I, 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 I agree with that to a certain extent. But when you have other people that do it to you, it's okay for you to get involved into a factor. But nobody, Eric didn't call dispatch, okay? There's no dispatch slots. There's no dispatch, there's no nothing. We pulled Ipras, okay? You had officers go over there. You're on body cam video where Eric calls you and asks you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't get involved. You should've said, "I, I can't. I can't get involved." But you gave Andrew's name. It's on recording. It's there. It's, you inserted yourself into something that you shouldn't do, correct? Right or wrong?
Again, in context, I can say that, right?
Right or wrong? But you, you, you inserted yourself into- I could give two shits about his name. But why you inserted yourself? No, it's okay for you to, to do that, but it's not okay for other people to do it. Okay? That's, that, that's how it is. It's like tit for tat. You know what I mean? It's like you're back in Alan Menche. You're getting picked on and you're going to tell a teacher something. Bro, you've been picked on your whole life. You've been picked on. I know people from Cajilon that know you. I know people from Espanola that know you. Nancy's your jefita, bro. Mesao's your jefico, bro. I know your whole familia, dude. I, I wasn't born yesterday. No, I have people that reached out to me from Cajilon that know you personally. No? Your family? No? Okay, your family doesn't talk to me. You're right. They, they, they have nothing to say. They won't. Tenth cousins. No, we're, we're talking about from, from first to third cousins won't tell me anything. They, they won't, they won't say nada. But anyways, why, why, why would you do that?
Well, what else can you do? You've gotta find out what's going on in the community, what's happening, and solve it.
Go to McDonald's on Tuesday and meet with the, all the, the people to show up.
They're all, they're all seniors. That's why, that's why he's boy.
I'm a senior. Which one of the seniors?
You're not a senior.
I'm sixty-two years old.
You look like you're in your late forties, early fifties, coming over sixty.
That deserves a tip.
You've gotta get your eyes examined. That's a good place to start.
Most, not every, most, when I have time, cuz I'm, I'm usually in meetings and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah? Nobody wa, nobody wants to tell you anything, bro. They don't even like you. No. I did, but not anymore. I have a better system now. So are they gonna fire you? Huh? Cuz I think they should fire your ass, to be honest. No, I, I think it's factual information. Wha, what about the First Amendment? Uh, no, you can't. You can't say whatever you want. Cuz you don't have the First Amendment.
No, you do.
No, you don't.
I just keep it to myself. I keep my opinions to myself.
How come, uh, how come, um, how come Cody's an asshole? I don't care how long he's been here. He is an asshole. That's my opinion, right? Right? You just said that, right? Are like assholes. Everyone has one. Look, I make this, I make this, this guy laugh. Like now he's being all serious. He's being all serious now. Hey, can you bring me a water?
Absolutely.
I don't got cash on me.
You're fine.
I'm, I'm, I only have plastic. Yeah, so, uh, what do, what do you wanna talk about now, bro? I'm, I'm, I'm like an open book. I have, uh, so there's, there's one thing I can let you know about me. I have no filter. I have no filter at all. At all. I don't hide behind something that I'm not. I don't portray something that I'm not. I'll tell you straight out. Not a- I don't support cops. I don't like cops. I don't like government. Give me the info and I'll, 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 I'll have my, my accountant send some money over. I won't be here. I'm heading to Denver with James tomorrow. I'll, I'll donate cash. I don't, I don't like cops. Who is it? Epley? I do the idiot too. I do the dickhead. He's stupid. Is he your muscle? Is doing Epley your muscle? I think he's an idiot, bro. He's one stupid. I, I met, I met a couple of- Wow, I'm stupid too? I hate him. I wish Camila Harris would've won for president cuz she would've defund law enforcement, bro. That was her slogan, defund law enforcement. It's that badge and that gun that makes you powerful. It is. No, it's not the law. It's not the law. The guy's abused the law. Hey, why do your officers park at Walmart, bro? Did, did Walmart, is there a contract with you and Walmart, bro, that you're their private security? Uh, I don't give a fuck. You wanted to talk, so we're talking. So you have officers sitting there instead of patrolling the streets? They're sitting there doing nada, collecting, colle, collecting money. Is that part patrol being part? Being part? Making arrests. But they're bullshitting the- But I'm not law enforcement. I don't get paid by taxpayers to do a job. There's a difference. You get paid by taxpayers to do a job. Not to sit in a unit and, and bullshit with the other person in the other unit. Wha, why ain't they patrolling? Why ain't they at the office doing the reports? But why, why aren't they at the office doing the reports? Then why are they bullshitting? Then why you bringing up reports, bro? You make no sense, buddy. No. Go get me water from the office. Cuz you think, there's water in the office, in the, in the employee- In the break room. No, I say bring me a water from, that's paid by taxpayers. Hell, yeah. But how do you- But where does your money come from? I, I make money. No, other people give me money. That's a difference. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for money. I don't, uh, I don't go begging. I don't go stand on the median and beg for some money next time I'm here. I don't do it on the median. I don't care. I, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna take, I wanna, I wanna get arrested. Get me arrested? Okay. I'll be here in August, the middle of August. Let me see your phone number. Um, the eighteenth, the eighteenth through the twenty-first. Of August. Aw, bro, you're talking papas, doc. Oh, help you, bro. I want you to take me to Teram Maria, or you don't even go to TA. I've been to T- I toured the facility. I've been in that facility. Can you take me to jail, Cody? I understand I'm a median. They're at the four-way stop of Riverside and, 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 uh, Fairview. Right there between Washington Federal and CVS, and I'm gonna hold up a sign and I'll walk up and down that median.
There's an ordinance against that.
But you know, you know, ho- ho- ordinances aren't laws. They're like rules.
Test it and see what happens.
Like, that's what I, that's what I'm doing. I'm letting- All day from eight in the morning till I get arrested. Probably from eight, probably from eight in the morning to eight oh one.
It will be a ticket. It will be a non-traffic. You refuse to sign the non-traffic, then it will be jail.
I, I don't sign tickets. I love it. It's a vacation. And then we'll, and then we'll go to court again.
I don't know. I saw that in the public of your last arrest. You didn't look like you were going on vacation at that.
I was. I was trolling. I was trolling these cops. I love, don't take me to jail. Don't take me to jail. I don't wanna go to jail. Don't take me to jail. I don't wanna go to jail. Don't take me. Please, don't take me. I remember it like it happened yesterday, bro. I was trolling. I remember. Don't take me, please. I don't wanna go to jail. I remember like it happened yesterday, Cody. It's all these people say when they get arrested. Don't take me to jail. I don't wanna go.
I've heard that a thousand times.
Exactly. That's what they all say.
And they'll have that same reaction.
Exactly. I, I, I have no fear of jail. I was happy. It's a mini vacay for me.
Now, the public dude didn't look like that.
That cuz I was trolling, bro. I ain't crying. Did it show, did it see us cry? Cuz I requested, but it doesn't show me crying. It doesn't show me crying at all, bro. No, no, we're here trying to say something that didn't happen. What I did say, don't take me to jail. I don't want- What else? Yes, what else did I see printed? I know, I have the video. But I ain't crying. So, uh, yeah, I'll be there. I wish for it every day, bro. That's how I make money, dude. Well, after municipalities and counties, bro. And get paid by taxpayers.
We haven't paid you for anything, so it's a waste of your time.
No, it's, uh, it's coming, bro. It's coming.
The only ones in here exempt from, uh, disorderly conduct is me and the officers in here. The rest of these people are not exempt from disorderly conduct. So all it takes is one person in here to complain about your profanity. Look up the state statute for profanity cuz I won't cite you in municipal court. I'll cite you in magistrate court. The state statute says profane, profane behavior. One of these people complaining here, that's disorderly conduct.
They're all, they're all government employees.
No, they're not. Doesn't matter. No, it doesn't. The only one exempt from being a victim of disorderly conduct is me and any of these police officers in here. That's it. That's it. I can't get into an argument with somebody on the side of the road and arrest them for disorderly conduct. Whether someone's a government contractor, a government employee or not, doesn't mean anything.
It, it does.
It does not.
It does.
Well, if it does get to that point, argue that in court, court and see what happens.
I really did. Ask Mesao.
He asked, he said he didn't go.
Well, ask Mesao what happened. Ask Mesao what he did.
Cut you some slack.
But why?
And he didn't show up.
Why?
Cuz he has a heart. Me, on the other hand, no. This guy here, no. Him? Absolutely not. Just because you're a government employee doesn't mean you're exempt from, uh, disorderly conduct. Like I said, I won't cite him in municipal court either.
You can take me to a magistrate, bro. What would threaten me with a good time like that? This is Cody. I just, I just rattled his feathers. I just rattled his feathers. He should've said something a long time ago. What's your badge number, Cody? Is your badge number five or no? I changed. I'm not doing anything, bro. He came in, joined the conversation, bro. Got quiet. Oh, here they come. No resolution.
Um, the time is seven forty-two. Council will reconvene to regular session from executive session.
We need your motion, sir. Point of order, unique motion and no action was taken in executive-
Let me finish, Mayor Protev. No action was taken in executive session this evening pursuant to ten fifteen one H one NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. Separate individual performance evaluations of the city manager.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Exit out of executive session. Mayor Protev, Vélez Su Martínez second by Councilor Justin Salazar Torres. Is there any action to be taken from executive session?
Mayor Protev, Vélez Su Martínez, in favor? Councilor Justin Salazar?
In favor.
Councilor Daisbana Vidas?
In favor.
Councilor Aaron Salazar?
In favor.
Councilor Pedro Robez?
Yes.
Councilor Felicia Chulet Victoria?
In favor.
Councilor Lynette Rodriguez. Councilor Samuel.
In favor.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilor Pedro Valdez.
Here at, uh, under, under the executive session, uh, evaluating, uh, the four positions on the city manager, I'd like to, uh, for us to vote on a settlement agreement of resignation of the employee hereby as a resigns voluntarily as a closed business Friday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty five. On this appointment, Office of City Manager, and ask employer of the city, and employer will accept such resignation effective upon signature of both the employee and employer's vote.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Pedro Valdez, second by Councilor Justin Salazar Torres. Under discussion, Councilor Samuel Adu.
I'd like the motion to table this.
Second.
Motion to table by Councilor Adu, second by Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez, voting out the motion right now is the motion to table. Uh, can we get a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez, in favor. Councilor Justin Salazar Torres.
Not in favor.
Councilor Dennis Benavides.
In favor.
Councilor Aaron Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Aaron Salazar. In favor. Councilor Pedro Valdez.
No.
Councilor Felicia Chuleto Toya.
No.
Councilor Lynette Rodriguez.
No.
Councilor Samuel Adu.
In favor.
Do you have a tie for a court?
No.
Alright, the original motion on the floor is to adopt the settlement agreement introduced by Councilor Pedro Valdez, second by Councilor Justin Salazar Torres. And, uh, under discussion. Under discussion, Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez.
I can hear. You know, i- it saddens me that we have, uh, we have this settlement agreement before us. Uh, not because I don't agree with some of it, but because I don't agree with all of it. And the city of Espanola, city councils are being put in a position where we either agree to this and it's total, or we assume whatever liabilities come by not agreeing to this. That's a hell of a place to be. This agreement, the last paragraph. The last paragraph states that Eric Wuhan will be compensated at his current rate of pay and benefits, but without approval of annual leave, sick leave, vacation, or any other leave with or without pay. Will be carried on by the city payroll to work for, on a project list until and through the thirtieth day of September twenty twenty-five. During his tenure in the position of Special Projects Coordinator, Eric Wuhan shall report directly to the mayor. Eric Wuhan will not supervise or direct any city employees, Eric Wuhan will provide weekly oral reports to the mayor regarding, in regard to his work or, and the progress on the work, regard to foregoing projects. The mayor shall have the discretion to require additional written summaries of the work and the progress of the work from time to time at the mayor's request. I have to be honest and state that I am not in favor of this part where Eric shall report directly to the mayor. At some level, this document is stating basically, he's sort of like a contractor that will not work here at the city. He will work outside the city and only report to the mayor. I'm very uncomfortable with that. Uh, oral reports to the mayor are, are not sufficient for me because it doesn't help the council understand where the project is or what is going on. And I think that's something that we've suffered from for a long, long time. The other part of this is that he becomes a Special Projects Coordinator. If you remember at our last meeting, we tabled the ability for anybody to hire except for police essential staff. It was asked if police was included in the hiring freeze. It was, it was specified that no, the police department was not included in that. So that told me that beyond the police department and possibly the fire department, all other jobs are at a dead freeze. This position here, i- it's not, uh, it's not a new position for the books because he retains his rate of pay and benefits. But, at the same time, he does not get annual leave, sick leave, or vacation, or leave, or leave without pay. So to me, is he a contractor or is he an employee? If he's a contractor, then he should not receive PRA, he should not receive the benefits. If he's an employee, then he should receive full benefits and abide by the forty hours a week in-house, and also abide by the employee's handbook. And if that happens, in order to make him the Special Projects Coordinator, this council would have to table, put on the table, the rule of non-hiring for one vote. That would have to happen. We cannot say we have a hiring freeze and then make a hire, that's not right, that's incorrect. So that, th- these are the issues that I have with this contract. I, I, I've stated these issues to my peers, I respectfully respect everyone at this table and your opinion, but I still cannot tell you that I can vote on this without feeling that it's literally being shoved down our throat.
Councilor Adu.
This position being created by this settlement is awful. It makes no sense, it doesn't, even the idea of just voting to create a position so someone could just get retirement, they won't sue us, is going to set an awful precedent. It is going to make it so that every single time a director decides that doesn't do their job and we have to fire them, they're going to say, "Well, I'm gonna threaten litigation." And then that is going to create a situation where we may be in this situation all over again. There's gonna be, how many jobs are we gonna hand out to people that don't wanna do their job? If we are going to make a decision to get rid of the city manager, we should make that decision and not set this precedent, period. That is my opinion, and I think that if the council goes down this road and we agree to this settlement, we are going to be in a world of hurt. We are setting some long-term issues here, and I hope that we take that into consideration. Particularly because the city manager has what? Six, seven months left? We're going to be in a situation where we have to find a new city manager, go through all the voting, find all of the, all, all of the processes just to get back to a normal government. We're gonna completely disrupt everything, and if we have good cause to get rid of him, then we should pursue that and not settle. This is ridiculous, thank you.
Councilor Benavides.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I have the exact same concerns Mayor Protem had, and in addition to those concerns, I was handed an agreement tonight that was already signed. And then I'm being told it's not an executed agreement. Well, it sure sat on there, it was an executed agreement. And, and I refuse, I refuse to accept it, it is wrong in every way. Like Mayor Protem, I respect my fellow councilors' decisions, but I will tell you that I'll go with it, I won't go for it. It's absolutely incorrect, it's the wrong way to do it. We passed a resolution and now we're violating that? Why pass it?
There's no further discussion, will the quick toss a vote?
Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez.
I'm gonna have to vote against it, but I wanna qualify my vote by stating that I, I feel that there's too much ambiguity in the, in the description of the work that Eric will be performing for the city. And I don't agree that he should report directly to the mayor. I think it breaks the chain of command, if he's an employee, he should be held to, to the chain of command that any other employee is held to. If he's not an employee, then he should not receive PRA. It's, it, you can't have it both ways.
Councilor Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Dennis Benavides.
Not in favor.
Councilor Aaron Salazar.
In favor.
Councilor Pedro Valdez.
In favor.
Councilor Felicia Chuleto Toya.
In favor.
Councilor Lynette Rodriguez.
In favor.
Councilor Samuel Adu.
Not in favor, and I'd like to qualify my vote by saying, I don't, I've never had the highest opinion of Mr. Wuhan, I didn't vote for him. But to do it this way, this is not the right move, thank you.
Motion carries, far to three.
Thank you. Moving on, um, we're gonna go to councilor comments.
No.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, that's right, forgive me.
Motion to go into executive session.
Per second, ten fifteen, H one two, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, separate individual performance evaluations of the city clerk. A upon motion, second, duly passed, okay. Can I get a motion to, 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 to? Motion, Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez, second by Councilor Samuel Adu, roll call.
Mayor Protem Begisu Martinez.
In favor.
Councilor Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Councilor Dennis Benavides.
In favor.
Councilor Aaron Salazar.
In favor.
Councilor Pedro Valdez.
Yes.
Councilor Felicia Chuleto Toya. Councilor Lynette Rodriguez. Councilor Samuel Adu. Motion carries, six to.
You guys are ashamed, you guys should be ashamed. Shame of yourself. Now we know where the line lays. The alliance, there's an alliance within the city. This is how dirty corruption is. So dirty it is in the city. That's the mayor, alright, little kid right there.
Do you, do you host all these?
Yeah, I hardly come.
Are they gonna try and promote this one? They can't do it because they have to vote. He can't do, he can't do it. He's in the pool. He's got, he's got his foot on your lap, these people are all idiots. That was.
You're gonna need to have vacation this month.
Like, how is he? He knows these are the horrible reports. I don't want his lawyer. I gotta get his lawyers.
I know, I'm gonna call him now, I'm gonna call him right now. Yeah.
But can't they? I don't think they can. They can't speak directly. Right now, I don't know. I trust. Wow.
Hey, my name is Jake Torres, nice to meet you. Sorry, sorry for all the heat. If we ever get there.
I can hear, he's not gonna be there all week. He's out, he's in a week. He had to go sign your shit. He was saying, he was saying that he's not gonna be all week.
He's got his special schedule.
Do you think that like the last eight years, I have to, do you think I could swing something like that?
Just go back to the juke.
You, you can do like the alumni association. Kind of interesting, these guys. To narrow off because they... They can't even make a decision themselves, can they?
Where'd you guys go?
I'm here, she killed it. That's not... I killed it. I killed here. Mine's named Dark Cat and Mouse.
I got, I gotta go. Thank you, guys.